Slus, ELT and members of the public like to declare the meeting open at nine thirty. And to start by acknowledging the Kondamooka people who are the traditional custodians from that which we meet this morning. I'd also like to pay respect to elders past and present and extend that respect to any other Indigenous Australians who may be here today. Just quickly run through the housekeeping, just to remind you that the meeting is being recorded in audio video and is also being livestreamed. So just a reminder to councillors that you don't have parliamentary privilege extended to you in these chambers as it is for state and federal parliamentarians. And just be careful of what you say in public, any comments you make during the course of this meeting obviously will be recorded. I would also like to remind councillors to use the microphone when speaking and for any council officers who are attending virtually, which they aren't at the moment, but in case they do, we ask you to use the mute button when you're not speaking. In the event of an evacuation, I would ask you remain calm and follow my directions. The emergency exit is through the gallery doors on the left and down the stairwell exit to Bloomfield Street. Reminder about our standing orders eight point four, which is public conduct during meetings. All members of the Public Present Act meeting, not without the prior approval of the chairperson must make any audio or video recordings or take any photographs. We ask that they remain quiet and not disrupt the meeting in any way, not to bring any signs, placards, items that may cause a hazard or interfere with other persons who are present. We ask you to be suitably dressed and please, if you could turn all your mobile devices to silent mode. And if you need to take a call, please leave chambers to take them outside. As chairperson, I have some responsibilities and it's to warn a member of the public present at meeting who's not complying with any of these requirements that I made with or without such warning, require that person to leave the meeting and not return for such a period as decided by the chairperson. And that may include future meetings. Councillors, today we have a leave of absence that you have been advised of. So I'm going to need to have a move around second, if I could, that we provide a leave of absence for councillor Adelia Burridge, both councillor Bishop, a seconded councillor Boglari. Councillor Mackenzie, you have some questions?
At the last year, councillors Boglari and Huellit declared conflicts of interest in a matter that involved councillor Burridge. So I'm wondering if that complex still applies now, you're making decisions on her?
You did actually leave the room eventually. No, you left. Yeah, both you and Lance left. Can I seek some advice from our? It's just a leave of absence, I'm being told, but yeah, so that's not required unless they decide they want to do that themselves. I had some other hands up, I thought, about questions in regards to leave of absence. Questions? Oh yeah, we have a move around a secondist, so councillor Bishop has moved it and councillor Boglari has seconded it. And then there was a question asked by councillor Mackenzie and I saw a couple of hands go up, so councillor Talty.
Yes, I do have some questions, Madam Mayor. With regard to the conflict of interest, I do appreciate that there is no conflict of interest for a leave of absence. However, in this case specifically, the leave of absence relates to councillor not being present to respond to a requirement to make an apology. And that is the matter that the councillors had the conflict with. So I'm not sure if that complicates it further, but I'll leave that to others to weigh up.
Point of order. Well, I just don't, I believe that that's not relevant to us to make a decision about a leave of absence.
Well, that's why I'm asking councillor.
Well, I'm just wondering if we're going beyond the order of business, which is to vote on this matter. And we're introducing other matters which are not relevant to this decision.
Which? So, as I said, the leave of absence requires councillors to make a decision. So they're asking them to be informed on the reasons for that leave of absence. And I think that's completely appropriate and would be required for anyone to make a decision adequately.
I believe there's a circulated letter yesterday on that matter from the councillor.
Councillor, you don't have the floor and I've said it's not a point of order. I'll just get, I'll just get Tony from Corporate Governance or Andrew Ross to just confirm that for me, please. We'll see you.
The reason why the absence was detailed in a brief email from the mayor to you all yesterday.
Okay, that wasn't so.
Question I don't.
No, that's, I have more than one question. Okay, so I understand this is requested on a medical leave basis. Can councillors see the certificate or the dates of the certificate, please?
Point of order, previously when I have asked for.
Councillor, you don't have a, it's not a point of order, let the officers respond, please.
Well, I've thought a point of order.
Well, what's a point of order according to your standing orders? That we're asking for information on an individual councillor, which previously doesn't need to be developed. It's not, what's a point of order according to your standing orders councillor?
Oh, look, I'm not like other councillors and have them written in front of me, sorry.
Let the officers respond.
Can I see at least the dates and the fact that this medical certificate exists before I vote on it?
Thank you councillors, general council or corporate governance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is a medical certificate cited by the officers dated the second of February. That medical certificate is not supposed to be tabled for privacy reasons.
Okay, so it's dated the second of February. We're now on the twenty first of February, so that's three weeks later. What period does this certificate cover, please?
Point of order, seven point six point six.
Yes?
We're failing to comply with proper procedures because previously when a councillor puts in a leave of absence, I've been told we don't need to have the reason given to us. And that has been upheld within this chambers.
Officers?
Outstanding orders talks to valid reason, seeking a leave of absence that's put to the council vote.
I think the complication, if I can just assume, is that today was a day that a public apology was due in this chambers. And so that's why I think there's some questions about the validity of the leave and the councils are entitled.
Madam Mayor, my understanding based on the email councillors received was that this councillor doesn't intend to attend the next meeting of council either. So I would like to know if this one certificate is covering the entire period from the second of February, basically until no further appearances a councillor required.
Tony?
Madam Mayor, through you councillor Talty, the medical certificate is until the eighth of March.
Right, thank you. So the councillor is unwell and can't attend anything from the second of February to the eighth of March. She must be very unwell, I hope that she is feeling better.
Through you, Madam Mayor, that was the length of the certificate took in today and up until the eighth of March. And that's all we can get, but we haven't got any further details than that, it was just the doctor's certificate giving the period of time.
We will have to adopt a leave of absence for the next meeting as well, correct? Leave of absence only applies to this meeting?
Unless circumstances change through you, Madam Mayor, yes.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Gola, you had your hand up.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I would just like to offer some caution here. I've had to take a leave of absence recently.
Yeah, we're really just asking you about questions.
Yeah, I know that, but still, I think we need to be very cautious here. If the councillor has a medical certificate and a valid reason, then we shouldn't be trying to interfere with that. I think you could grant the leave of absence, and I know I'll probably get a piloting for this later, but at the end of the day, there's got to be something fair and equitable in this as well. If it continues, then you could question it, but right now, they're just asking for a leave of absence for today.
Thank you councillor, councillor Mitchell.
Actually, they asked for a leave of absence two meetings.
Well, that's a different matter because that'll be for the next meeting.
Councillor Mitchell?
My concern is for the community to see that very publicly, if the councillors had a medical certificate since the second of February, there's been very energetic and frequent public appearances by this councillor. And I'm struggling to understand how specifically she's so unwell to even dial into a meeting where is, is very capable of attending large public gatherings at any hour of day. I want to be kind and caring.
I'll ask you to frame that as a question.
Is there any more specific information that the organisation is able to request that might give the community a little bit more understanding of why, seems rather specific, the choice of ability of the councillor to meet certain duties but not others?
Officers, Andrew?
We take the medical certificate on face value and you've been informed of the date range of that medical certificate.
Any other questions? I mean, there's no doubt councillors, you all know that this particular time of political cycle, it's a very stressful time. I personally think it's more stressful for you out there than it is in here because we have rules and regulations that govern how we meet. But at the same time, as it's been offered by the officers, there is a medical certificate. And it will be for today's meeting only, from what I understand. And it will be obviously, so just to be clear, it's for today. We will have to make a similar decision at the last meeting of this term of council. As I understand it, that's been explained to me, so, and that's been the process previously. Councillor Talty?
Could I just have a little bit of information from governance, please, Madam Mayor? What would happen if, in fact, the vote today did not grant councillor Burridge a leave of absence?
Tony?
Thank you for the question.
I wouldn't know the understanding of vindictive.
Councillor Boglari, that was completely unnecessary, thank you. If you don't have the floor, I was going to apologize if you needed me to.
Honestly, it wouldn't be sincere.
We have given, we have given, we have given leave of absence to other people for numerous general meetings in a row.
Thank you councillor Boglari, as I said. And what makes it a little different is there is a public apology due today by that particular councillor that has a leave of absence. That is what's complicating the issue and I'm asking Tony to answer the question.
And I thank councillor Boglari for her apology and I'm very pleased that she is capable of making one.
If I can get the officer. Councillor, can I please just ask you to respect the standing orders? Don't speak over the floor and let the officer answer a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you do councillor Talty, under the Local Government Act, if a councillor does not attend two meetings in a row without leave of absence, they can forfeit their position as a councillor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Because I'd like to put the vote if I could, those in favour? Those against? Those in favour, those in favour for granting the leave of absence? There you go, let's carry it unanimously, thank you councillors. Well, that question wasn't actually answered in regards, sorry, but it's too late that, but the fact that the matter was more about the apology rather than the leave of absence, but we've moved on. So we'll go on to the next item, which is thankfully our devotional segment. I'd just like to welcome pastor Angie Herance from Chaplaincy Australia, who is also a member of our ministers fellowship, to please lead us in a devotional segment, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, good morning, members of council and members of the public. Thank you for the honour of being able to bring devotions to you this morning. It is my privilege. Today I just wanted to read from Philippians four, verse six to seven. It says, "Don't worry about anything, instead pray about everything. Tell God what you need and thank him for all he has done. Then you will experience God's peace, which exceeds anything we can understand. His peace will guard your hearts and minds as you live in Christ Jesus." What I love, this has been one of my favourite verses ever since I was a little kid. And the reason being is because I feel as though it gives us step by step instruction on how to not worry. It starts out, it says, "Don't be worried about anything." And, you know, we just have spoken about how busy this season is, how stressful this season is. And I understand coming into a new year can be particularly busy as well. And it's hard not for us to, for us not to be stressed. The interesting thing about stress though is that it affects our bodies. It affects everything that we do. It affects how often we get sick, it reduces life expectancy, it makes allergies worse, it can cause digestive issues. And it can even make things harder to remember. I find that last point particularly interesting because when we're most stressed is when we're trying to be as switched on as possible. And in actual fact, stress reduces our ability to be able to remember things. This verse goes on to say, and it says, it doesn't just tell us not to worry because I think that that's a really generalised statement, but it goes on to say what we can do about that instead. It says, "Instead pray about everything." The interesting thing about prayer is that prayer elicits a relaxation response within the body. It can actually lower your blood pressure. Prayer releases control to something greater than ourselves, which reduces the stress of needing to be in charge. You know, stress, prayer can actually be a counter actor to stress. You know, this verse, it goes on to say, "Then you will experience God's peace, which exceeds anything we can understand." It says, "His peace will guard your hearts and minds as you live in Christ Jesus." You know that statement I made where it says it makes it hard, stress makes it harder to remember things? It actually says here that God's peace will guard your heart and mind. It'll actually be a protective factor for your mind. You know, I have worked as a chaplain for over ten years and have also worked as a pastor. I oversee our disaster chaplains here in Redland City Council. And, you know, the things that I hear throughout the day can be pretty overwhelming. I hear some pretty horrific things throughout the day, but I've made a decision. At the end of every day, I come home and I pray and I hand those things over to God. And that's a habit I've placed in my life, which makes me be able to relax when I get home and realise that, you know what? I can't take everyone home with me, I can't rescue everyone, that's not my role. Instead, my role is to play my part, to play my part well, to ensure I take care of my body and to ensure that I hand my stresses over to God and ask God to be in control instead. Can I just pray for you? Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this opportunity to be able to gather. I thank you for everyone in this room who represents the greater people in this city. And Lord, we just pray that, Father, they would learn, we would all learn, Father, to take care of ourselves better, to be able to hand our stresses over to you and to recognise that if we hold on to things, it's actually really bad for our health. So Father, I ask that you would give us your peace as we hand our prayers over to you. That your peace would guard our hearts and minds and that it would be a protective factor as we go throughout the day and throughout the rest of the year, this year. Lord, we thank you for that in Jesus's name. Amen. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, councillors. Um, the next item on our agenda is a recognition of achievement, um, and is, as is tradition, each year we get the opportunity to acknowledge some outstanding Redlanders and today is no different. Um, and I'm really proud to have this role, um, for the last time to acknowledge those who are on the Australia Day honours acknowledgement list, so. What we have in the, uh, what we have this year is three outstanding inspiring members of our Redlands Coast community, Dr Vicky Flanady, James Niven and Joan Brotherton. These individuals are known for going above and beyond to help others in our community and they have given many years of their life to public service. Their dedication and commitment and the contributions to our beautiful Redlands Coast and the wider society are truly inspiring. So last month, they were acknowledged for their hard work with recognition on the Australia Day honours list. And these accolades are given to individuals who consistently perform to the highest standard within their chosen field. They're recognised as the best our nation has to offer. So it gives me great pleasure to acknowledge their incredible service to the community today. I'm missing a name here. Let me just start with. James Niven from Berkdale. James Niven received a Medal of the Order of Australia, um, O A M, for service to the building and construction industry. He is heavily involved in the Queensland chapter of the Australian Institute of Building, where he has served as a committee member since nineteen ninety-seven. And is current, the current chairman of the Events and Sponsorship Committee. He's previously served as treasurer, secretary and president. He, his work with the Australian Institute of Building extends to the national body where he has been the budgeting moderator for a judging panel since two thousand and two and has previously served as a national councillor and acting executive director. He's the current director of Genivco. A position he has held since eight, uh, nineteen eighty-nine and was a cost planner with the organisation between nineteen eighty-nine and two thousand and sixteen. His other roles within the industry include member of the Australia Institute of, uh, Quantity Surveyors and member of the Queensland Education and Mentoring Committee, National Women in Construction. And I'll just ask James to hold his horses there for a bit while I acknowledge the others in the room. Um, Joan Brotherton. Now Joan's received a Medal of the Order of Australia, O A M, for service to lawn bowls. She is involved in the sport on, on Red, our Redlands Coast and right across Queensland. Her role with the Gateway District Ladies Bowls Association have included umpire coordinator, president, vice president, secretary, board member, match coordinator and delegate to Bowls Queensland. I hope she gets a chance to play bowls. She is the current umpire coordinator and secretary of the Victoria Point Bowls and Recreation Club, where she has previously served as president, ladies vice president and deputy chair. Her other active roles in the sport include Bowls Queensland Umpire Committee Member, Bowls presenter and assessor, international technical officer and level one and two national umpire. She is a former secretary and assistant secretary of the Cleveland Bowls Club, Bowls title holder in Queensland, New South Wales and the Northern Territory and served as a Bowls official at the twenty-ten Commonwealth Games in Delhi, India. How exciting. Now, we have one person who I believe is absent, so I just, I might just acknowledge Dr Vic, Vicky Flanady from Kitchin, Mudlow Island. Um, she was named a member of the Order of Australia, A M, for significant research, uh, medical research, particularly in the field of perinatal mortality. She's held various roles with the International Stillbirth Alliance, the Martin Institute Queensland, uh, Research Institute University of Queensland, pardon me, and the Perinatal Society of Australia and New Zealand. She's also served as a member of the Perinatal Subcommittee with the Maternal Perinatal Quality Council since two thousand and four and has been a chair of the Perinatal Mortality Committee since two thousand and eight, both of which fall under the banner of Queensland Health. So with that, I think everyone here will agree with me that these individuals have, uh, demonstrated an exceptional level of service to their chosen, chosen fields and thereby to our community. They're very worthy recipients of the Australia Day's honour and so we'd like to congratulate them and invite you up here to receive a small gift and take a, a certificate of achievement home with you and a beautiful bunch of flowers. Put your hands.
Thank you very much.
We've got that, we've got to put that crest right behind my head so it looks like, oh, I've got something growing out of the top of my head. Oh, sure. I'll have it here in front of safe words. Oh, man. Just, um, just look into that microphone.
All right. Thank you. I'd just like to thank, um, Redland City Council. Um, you have done a, I've been with, I've been involved since nineteen sixty-nine and from nineteen eighty-four, when I came up to Brisbane, um, you have been very supportive of me, especially when I've represented Australia. I've represented Australia ten times actually a, and you have given me a personal amount of money to, to assist and I just thank you very much and also when you're sponsoring various events at the Bowls Clubs. We, we, I know everybody appreciates that and I, I especially appreciate exactly everything that you've done. And also just some of the letters that I have received. Thank you so much.
James has opted out.
Yes.
Thank you. Very strange. I did, um, jump from condolences. So councillor Bishop, if you're just advised, you'd like to, um, provide some condolences on behalf of the commi, community member?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's with great sadness that I wish to acknowledge the passing of Ian Kelk, who has been an educator for many, many years, a resident of Redland City for many years and, and former Commodore of the Witten Redlands Canoe Club. I will attend his memorial service on Friday. I'll, um, make a presentation at, at the next general meeting, but I just wanted to acknowledge the loss to his family and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bishop. Next item, councillors, receipt confirmation of our minutes from the seventeenth of January, twenty twenty-four. Can I please have a mover and second that they be confirmed, moved? Councillor Mackenzie, second to councillor Mitchell, any items of correctness? There being none, we'll put the motion. Those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Just quickly, councillors, and I'm not sure that there'll be any of these today, but just in case, um, declaration of prescribed conflict of interest. You're reminded about your responsibilities in relation to these prescribed conflict of interest, declarable conflicts of interest at, uh, meeting. Um, those details are outlined also in your agenda. Please be reminded that all interests need to be declared at a statutory meeting of council and this means any prescribed or declarable conflicts of interest relating to an item being discussed at a non-statutory meeting needs to be declared at the workshop or special meeting preceding the non-statutory meeting workshop. A potential list of items to be discussed at all non-statutory meetings are made available to councillors with each workshop agenda before the preceding general meeting, so this can be achieved and just a reminder that you can make those declarations anytime throughout the meeting, if there's been none advised. I'll hand over now to the CEO for matters of afternoon.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Uh, item seven point one, the support of local law on local government-controlled areas, facilities and roads. Um, the report will come to a future meeting of council, which, um, addresses that matter. The second item is the notice of motion, councillor Talty, on the report on council's programmes related to the Environmental Protection and Biodiversity Conservation Act. That report will come to a future meeting of council. Uh, the Berkdale Community Creasing Local Government Infrastructure Designation Consultation Report will come to a future meeting of council. Um, the item that was, um, discussed earlier, the conduct breach from the seventeenth of January, will come forward as a matter outstanding on the next agenda item.
Thank you, CEO. There are no verbal minutes, but we do have public participation today, so if I could, uh, in accordance with six point one zero of the council meeting standing orders, ask that a period of fifteen minutes may be, made about, be made available by resolution to permit members of the public to address the local government on matters of public interest relating to local government. So I could have a move and second. Thanks. Move councillor Edwards, second to councillor Mitchell. Those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. Uh, with that, I'll ask Mr Malcolm Farnham just to make his way to the microphone. As he does that, um, I just wanted to give you some bit of a rundown, if I, I could, Mr Farnham, in regards to how this works. You may, may have seen some of the signage around chambers regarding public participation at meetings. It's our usual practice to require any person wishing to address the meeting to state their name and suburb or the organisation that they represent and the subject they wish to speak about. This information will be recorded in the minutes, um, which is a public document available for inspection at council's administration building and it's also published on council's website. I'd like to also advise you that the meeting is being livestreamed and that by speaking you acknowledge and agree that this meeting can be seen, uh, live in the public domain. So just a quick rundown, state the name, suburb, organisation you represent, subject you wish to speak about. We ask you to stand unless you can't do that, you're already doing that, so we have to tick that box. Um, act and speak with decorum, be respectful and courteous, make no comments directed at any individual council employee, councillor or member of the public, ensuring that all comments relate to council as a whole. And I do have some responsibilities in managing that, which is to consider each application on its merits and consider any relevant matter in making my decision to allow or disallow a person to address the local government. Uh, also, only those members of the public who have an approved application are able to do so. And how, are those details, those details how you do that is on our council's website. And also have the responsibility of determining the maximum number of speakers based on the number of persons wanting to speak and the time available. We only have one today, so we're allowing you five minutes. Um, and with that, um, I also have one, one other responsibility and that is I can withdraw the right, your right to speak to us before the time period has elapsed. But with that, um, I'll hand over to you, Mr Farnham.
Yeah, hi. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, my name's Mel Farnham. I currently live at number ten Jason Street at Kapalaba. And, um, we, we, on the, um, with the community, I've had a petition for the development at nine Jason Street, which is MCU two, three, zero, one, eight, one, which is a fifteen-unit four-storey building on a six hundred square metre block. Um, which is a, uh, one of the smallest blocks in the whole area there. This proposal, we find, is completely out of character with this area as the entire area is of single and two-story homes and, and, um, new units there. It disrupts the area of character, um, plus falls way short of community expectations. Um, the major concerns for the young, all the neighbours in the area there is, is the privacy issue for neighbours. Um, the proposed structure will be hard on all boundaries of the block, right? Currently, there is a single-story dwelling there, um, with the neighbours basically only metres away. Um, and all the abuse and bay berrises and most importantly, their privacy and their yards were completely lost. On one side, there is, um, a matter of oh, five metres away, you've got two children's bedrooms, which all they'll be doing is that there'll be a four-story building next to that and they'll be looking straight into those bedrooms. The other is the yards where you've got, you can sit out in the back. One particular neighbour at the rear, all she will see is a four-story brick building. Okay, now she's currently got trees and a bay breeze that she can sit out there and we just call it as the livability of the area. Um, parking and traffic is another major concern because it's limited parking on the street as it is. Um, this in, this street runs within intersection to Kalani Avenue, um, and Picklin Street South and also has Quinton Street runoff at a right angle. And I can tell you now, from, I live opposite the Quinton Street site, is that when there's a lot of cars or there's a few cars parked there, it is, I've seen some near misses, very, very, a number of near misses and, um, this will be very dangerous. Um, now the lim, with the developer had said that there was a car ownership will be limited, but there's no data to, um, to back that fact up. And my, our question is, what about the visitors that are coming? Um, do they all walk or catch public transport or drive? Um, so that's the thing that we look at. Also, there's no footpaths at all. Um, so people will be walking on the street, um, which is then another endanger with people with traffic. So it's just, um, uh, you know, there's, those are the major issues. Waste management is another issue, right? You've got fifteen units there. Water quality, drainage, um, are, are the big issues for this, this development. A feature of the Redlands, I believe, is the livability of the area, right? Um, and that is where people choose to live and here. And a lot of the people in this area now have lived there thirty-plus years. We believe that the current proposal will severely impact the livability of this area and should be, um, you know, and should not proceed in its current format. As a community, we understand the need for this sort of housing, okay? We're not eating development, but we're eating inappropriate development. Right? Um, that's all we ask because if, if there was a two-story building or whatever put there, we wouldn't have a problem with it. Um, but doing it the way that meets community expectations plus the character and sustainability for the area. You know, we can have a short-term fix, but what do you introduce for the whole area? The biggest thing is to keep in mind the livability again and for ratepayers and people living in the proposed developments. So we do, um, ask that it be, uh, as an appropriate size and meets the character and the expectations of the community. So finally, we ask the council planning department to actually take a site visit and look at the area and then you can actually see an assessment. If you did an assessment, a live assessment, you would see the impact that you're going to have. Okay? And we believe that we, I think they owe it to the ratepayers of the city and looking for a long-term planning solution. That's what we ask for rather than a short-term fix. Okay? And that's, or, you know, like I said, thank you for your time. We just, as I said, that's the reason why. And all the community people there or the members and the residents that I've spoken to, you know, have the same view that we just want something that, like I said, that fits into the area rather than a five, four-story building next to, and I'm talking from here to the councillor in front of me, from the neighbour, one of the neighbours. And he'll be in the shade all day and have no, and it's said, it's just completely out of character, but thank you for your time. And I hope, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Mr Farnham. Councillors, um, with that, can I ask that we now resume meeting proceedings with a motion? Those, uh, move councillor Edwards, second to councillor Mitchell. Those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. So we do have some petitions to present now, councillors. First one is councillor Boglari.
Oh, thank you. Um, I have a petition to present today from residents requesting to stop the destruction of Wellington Point's value unique bush track. For years, the bush track has been a necessary part of our daily lives. It is a section of a circuit much used for walking, running, jogging or just strolling. The bush track provides access to natural vegetation, numerous bird calls, a place away from traffic and noise and includes views of Molton Bay. A natural resource not possible for any human to replicate. It is a vital part of our wellbeing. The track's environment enhances emotional and mental health and gives opportunity for physical activity for all. The failure of council to incorporate the track in recent works must now be corrected and the scheduled complete destruction of the bush track stopped. It is necessary for all of us to protect nature, not to destroy it. Um, I move, the petition is of an operation major and to be received and referred to the chief executive officer for consideration.
Move councillor Boglari, second to councillor Bishop. Those in favour? Against? That's carried unanimously. Councillor Talty, you have a petition?
I do, Madam Mayor. Do I need, I don't need a second, do I?
You need to read it out first.
Okay.
Get the motion.
Okay, so this is a petition, uh, from the residents in Redland Bay for a badly needed footpath and, uh, road improvement. Um, it is of an operational nature and I do ask that it be received and referred to. Um. It is of an operational nature and I do ask that it be received and referred to the chief executive officer for consideration. Um. Uh, yes.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. Councillor Talty, you have to read. You're required to read the whole.
Yeah, well, I was going to, but I wasn't sure if I needed to finish moving it before I read the detail. Okay, that council, uh, the c, the, the community are asking, and I am also asking, that council install a footpath between Christopher Street bus stop and the roundabout at Donald Road, Torquay Road East. This route is being used by persons walking to the local shops and daycare and by uh, children utilizing the bus stop. There's currently no safe path uh, of travel due to uneven ground, steep slopes and falling branches and tree roots. Several children and parents with prams have been witnessed trying to navigate this route. And this is only a matter of time in the opinion of the um, petitioners that an accident will occur. Um. And I might add, this area is due for a full upgrade as part of the Colin Street um, School of Arts Road area. Uh, but that has been delayed and it is badly needed.
Yeah, we just need, yeah, we just need the motion, which is the petition is of operational nature and be received and referred to the chief executive officer for consideration. That's been moved by councillor Talty, seconded by councillor Edwards. Those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Now, the next item, um, was supposed to be a petition presented by councillor Beridge, but I believe councillor Hughes, you have those petitions? There's two, I think.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And uh, on behalf of councillor Beridge and her residents, item ten point three, a petition from residents requesting that council install speed humps between Lorena Court and Riley Drive on Spirit Drive to reduce the speed in which all vehicles come around the blind bend. Spirit Drive Park, a children's playground, is in the middle of this section and children's lives are at risk. Residents residing in this location are also at high risk of car accidents when entering and reversing out of their driveways. There have been countless near misses, unreported incidences and several accidents attended by emergency services. And on the, again, on behalf of councillor Beridge, the petition is of an operational nature to be received and referred to the chief executive officer for consideration. Thank you.
Move councillor Hughes, second to councillor Bishop. Those in favour? Oh, you have a question?
Do you need to change the ten point three to remove councillor Beridge's name to?
It'll be done in a minute.
Thank you. Those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Next one, councillor Hughes?
Uh, uh, thank you very clearly. On behalf of councillor Adelia Beridge, item ten point four, petition from residents seeking no approval of development application MCU twenty-three slash zero, one, eight, one at nine Jenson Street, Kapalaba. It's Ja- Jason? Okay, which is what Mr Farnham was just referring to, uh, Kapalaba. My apologies for mispronunciation, that spelling. Uh, uh, again, on behalf of councillor Beridge, to move the motion is of an operational nature and to be received and referred to the chief executive officer for consideration. Thank you.
So move by councillor Hughes, second to councillor uh, Edwards. I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. Uh, there being a no request to alter the order of business, so with that, we'll go straight to item thirteen point one. Um. If I could have a mover and seconded, thanks for the January twenty twenty-four monthly financial report. Move councillor Mitchell, second to councillor Mackenzie. Would you like to speak to it, councillor Mitchell?
Uh, just very.
Next, next time.
Thank you, everyone. Thank. Yeah, tha- thank you very much, Madam May. Uh, yeah, very briefly, uh, this is the um, monthly report, the thirty-one of January. Um, and probably just to get important to come in too, I think the easy part of the documentary is the executive summary. Um, uh, uh, to give you a bit of a hand in keeping an eye on on the finances of council. Uh, just note, we're on track for a largest capital expenditure and that's, that's good in itself in that we're uh, getting a lot of things done. Uh, but also just to point out that it's probably one of the most well-managed and nimble and responsive uh, capital programs with all the work that we're doing behind the scenes. Um, but also to acknowledge the cash balance uh, is is behind budget expectations, but there's actually a good news story behind that where there's a large uh, term deposit which is earning the community interest uh, to do it. So while um, on the surface it might look that that's a negative, it's actually a great positive. So, yeah, thank you.
Any speakers against?
Can I just, if if there's not just complement the organisation on the capital project delivery program, I think it's worth mentioning a couple of times. Um. Um. So it's a big well done. Uh, it's obviously a large um, capital delivery program that we have and to, and a couple of big projects in there too, and money out of got caught in the, one of those capital project delivery items coming to work on Wellington Street, but it's coming along really well. So just a big shout out to all of you. Um. I think we're breaking some records. Am I right to say that? Um. So, uh, yeah, so um, nice way for me to end my my time here in in um, Redlands City Council to see that figure going up. So thank you so much. Um. If there's no other questions, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Those against? That's carried unanimously. The next item is the operational plan quarterly performance report, thirteen point two. Um, move councillor Mackenzie, seconded. Councillor Hughes, would you like to speak to it, councillor Mackenzie?
Yes, thank you. Um. The operational plan is council's um, report card for the quarter of October twenty-three to December twenty-three in enacting our corporate plan. Um, I've, I'll just highlight a few of the things on there. Um. One of the big ones that we continue to advocate for is for our islands to be recognised as a regional status by the state and Commonwealth governments, and these efforts have been ongoing to build an evidence base while proactively identi- identifying opportunities to advocate to those levels of government. Um, for those islands to be considered as regional status, which would then allow some additional funding from those level of governments as well. Um, development and implementation for the Redlands Coast advocacy strategy and policy. And so this was also um, continuing to implement planning for the advocacy guideline and actively build partnerships with the state and federal government. Again, that then allows additional funding. Um, we always love funding from oth- other levels of government in order to deliver the services to our city. Um. Creative Arts has delivered a full pro- program of performances, exhibitions, workshops and community events. Um, and focused on prioritising First Nations represented representation. Um, restoration on the Bullets Farm continues and is currently on track for both budget and the timeframe. Council's five hundred thousand dollars civic support fund was launched, with the Rolling Fund having seen four successful applicants for community organizations to support residents in the community. Um. We've got temporary security cameras were deployed at five locations throughout the city. Obviously, community safety is constantly on everyone's lips, so council is picking up the tab for that. Furthermore, forty open space security camera footage requests were actioned in response to Queensland Police Service requests. Um, investigating opportunities to activate Redlands Coast coastline. Consultants have been com- have completed background level of service analysis and have recorded and documented over one hundred and seventy-four shore sites across Redlands over two weeks of onsite surveys. Obviously, um, our coast is our asset, so we want to activate that for our community and for tourism and um, and economic benefits. We continue to provide an education program um, through Indigenous Scapes. Six schools visited Indigenous Scapes for educational programs with a total of three hundred and thirty-seven participants. Um. We also had two hundred and forty-one community bush care volunteers contributed over a thousand and three hours of work through thirty-seven active groups undertaking bushland restoration tasks at sites across the city. An additional four thousand seven hundred and forty-four native plants have been planted in priority areas through these groups. Um. Significant progress has been made in developing the pedestrian cycle network plan, which includes work schedules and costings. And road users are now utilizing a significant portion of the roadway shared pedestrian cycle pathways along the Wellington Street and Panorama Drive upgrade. The Cleveland Town Centre Action Plan, and part of the Cleveland Town, which is part of the Cleveland Town Centre Activation Program, has been completed. Um, cou- councillors collaborating with our local stakeholders to develop and implement projects to revitalize Cleveland Town Centre. And councillors participated in the twenty twenty-three Asia Pacific Cities Summit in Brisbane and has commenced preparation for leading a Redlands Coast trade delegation to India. So this is to help develop a strategic approach to investment attraction to target specific market opportunities on Redlands Coast. So well done to our organization. That's just a few highlights, and I recommend our community read that report card, so they know what our council does for them.
Thanks, councillor Mackenzie. Any speakers against? There being none, I put the motion. Those in favour? Against? That's carried unanimously. Thirteen point three is uh, expansion to payment methods with, including American Express. Move councillor Mitchell, second to councillor Mackenzie. Would you like to speak to it, councillor Mitchell?
Um, just very briefly, while on the surface, this is just talking about investigating uh, for uh, A- AMEX customers, a very convenient way for them to go about their uh, uh, payments uh, to council, so that's great. Um, but just want to elevate that a little bit. That's a a relatively small but important thing. But frame it in the digital transformation processes. Council, we invested seven million dollars in that process this year where we're building a lot more contemporary digital platforms to enhance customer service across council. And it's just one small example of that, um, uh, data protection for our community is another. But this on its own is uh, AMEX looking to help serve their customers, which are also our customers. But the bigger picture is, you know, we're looking to modern, modernize and improve our customer services all while and in the digital space, that's uh, the new frontier.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll frame this as a question, um, but just confirming that on page ninety-nine, it says of note that council's preferred method of receiving payments and no surcharge will be placed on payments made to council by BPAY. That's just important to note, and I just ask, is that correct? It's in the report. I'm assuming it is. That's framed as a question. I hope that satisfies.
Any other questions? Question, councillor Talty?
Uh, that's close to the same question that I I just, for the record, would have, would like um, officers to confirm that there's no uh, greater cost to the community to provide this than any other form of payment. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you. Thank you definitely, Mayor, for the opportunity to talk to this. So yes, um, the, um, you'll recall in a strategy workshop, um, the representatives from that organization came and the CEO and I were very clear to say this does not come at, come at a community cost. Um, American Express has kindly offered to work with us to make sure that the um, merchant fees, which we will then claim back through your policy position and revenue policy are no larger than the existing merchant fees from other competitors. And has also offered to work with us on um, payments that might be required to update the rate notice, for example, to offer that as a new payment channel and um, allocation of resources for updating systems to make sure that we can work. So um, we will in, continue our investigations and will not proceed if it will be at a cost to the community. So that's the um, challenge that the CEO and I put to American Express, and it is happy to take on that challenge.
Thanks, Tip. Any need to sum up, councillor Mitchell? There being none, then I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Against? That's carried unanimously. Um, council, the next item um, is the fifty, is fifteen point one. I'll get a mover and seconded, but I might um, ask our very um, well-in tuned officers to give us a quick summary of the uh, state government correspondence and council's right to information request in regard to shaping uh, shaping SEQ twenty twenty-three, twenty-five. So councillor Talty is going to move the motion. Uh, seconded, thanks, councillor Boglary. Over to you, Dean. Just a quick summary, um, we often get, uh, often get the comments that um, state government's taking over our planning. Um, maybe this will provide a little bit of clarity as to how they do that, or if they are doing that.
Yep, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so you may recall that at the end of last year, the um, shaping SEQ, the new regional plan came into effect. Following um, that being finalized, we received a letter from the DDG, um, Miss Tess Pickering, who is otherwise referred to as the state planner. And in that letter, it requested um, the council work with the state government to give effect to the regional plan, to undertake alignment amendments to city plan, um, to ensure that, yeah, I guess they're working in sync. Um, so council then provided a response, and that, I think, forms attachment five to the council report. And it articulated that it was willing to work with the state government to do this. However, it did outline some concerns with the timeframe set for completing those alignment amendments, which were nominated to be undertaken by the end of twenty twenty-four. Um, the concerns that were outlined briefly um, were that there's still the um, Redlands housing strategy to be finalized. There was uncertainty, uh, or there was still outstanding information regarding planning investigations for Southern Thornlands. There's also local government, state government elections. Um, and we also articulated concerns with the section eighteen process and I guess the ability of the state government to process uh, amendments in a timely manner, noting that uh, there are other regional councils which will also be obligated to do this. And we have several amendments in train, so that was the basic concerns that were articulated um, by council and its response. The other part of this report um, deals with the right to information request, which you may recall council lodged um, during preparation of the regional plan last year. Um, we have to acknowledge that during this period, the state government was under immense pressure to deliver the final regional plan, but suffice to say, council was seeking um, information on the multimodal, so the model for urban land use transport integration, which informed um, the regional plan and the allocation of growth around the region. Um, yeah, so uh, we're seeking information on that, and we also sought further background information on um, Southern Thornlands, how the state government arrived at the position that Southern Thornlands was the most appropriate location in the region to accommodate future growth. So that's a basic overview um, of the information exchanges that have occurred between um, the department and the state government recently that are covered in this report.
Um, okay, so councillor Talty, you have the floor, or you have, you moved the motion?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor. So um, the motion before us is really to note this information that has been outlined um, by the officer, um, and to note that a request for an external review of the information provided, um, it was lodged uh, with the Office of the Information Commissioner on the eleventh of January. Um, while this is for noting, it's important, I think, for the community because this is very uh, confusing for people to understand how a council planning scheme and a council housing strategy are not fully in the hands of council to make those decisions. And um, as so often happens with the state, uh, they do frequently um, take their time in coming back to us and then expect us to respond in a very quick fashion when they ask for information. And uh, I would note, sorry, I had the page and I've lost it. I would note that um, our, our request, I don't think was unreasonable, asking for the reports and the information that the uh, additional housing requests and the additional planning requests were based on, be made available both to our planners and to our community so that they can understand why we are having this level of growth um, inserted into our, our plan. Um, and as we are all aware, people are acutely uh, aware in our local area of the lack of um, transport options, both from uh, upgraded main roads and public transport. And it is an expectation of our community that those things, while they, they, they are in the main e- accepting of growth, but they expect that those um, services will keep up with that growth. And so we, we sought very reasonably, I think, to provide the information that the state had, which was used to justify our uh, cooperation and and support for these measures. And I note um, on page one hundred and three, that the response to those requests from the state was that the application in its current form would substantially and unreasonably divert the resources of the department from their use by the department in the performance of its functions. In particular, the shaping SEQ team, who are at a critical time and are currently working at full capacity to deliver the shaping SEQ project. So uh, it would be my contention that um, the request as put to council would also unreasonably and substantially divert the resources of council, but um, apparently it doesn't work both ways. So I put to you that we note this report. Um, it is frequently presented that uh, this council is somehow recalcitrant to the requests of the state government. Uh, we would suggest, I think, that we're very reasonable in asking for information on behalf of our community. Thank you.
Any speaker against? Question? Councillor Mitchell?
Sure, this question through to, uh, through you two, the CEO, which Dean. I'm, was flabbergasted. I was flabbergasted when I saw the uh, with the information request that the state sent back. It was essentially fifty percent of the pages were redacted in some way. And I thought that was quite remarkable, that information to help the community, or at least council if it needed to be confidential, understand the state uh, requirements. They want us to have all that information. And how unusual is it that there were fifty percent of the pages that were redacted wholly or in part?
Is that your question? How unusual is it?
Yes, through on normal council uh, processes, I would say, information that the state, it's.
I hope you didn't ask a question, so um, I'll do your best to answer that one.
Yeah, uh, by you, Madam Mayor. So it's difficult for, for me to answer how frequently um, this level of redaction occurs, but I can provide insight as to why the red large parts of it were redacted. Um, I spoke with the information officer and part of the reason was that it was subject to what they call deliberative process. Um, so it was still subject to um, state government consideration, so prior to the finalisation of the regional plan. Um, and that is, I guess, a reason under the Rights to Information Act why the state or the officer assessing um, this request um, can redact parts of the report. It's um, it's, it's potentially likely that if we were to make the request right now, that significant parts that were redacted would be made available to council. But I guess, yeah, the obvious um, issue is that we're seeking information at a time when we, we need to inform our own decision making and I need to, or as a planning officer, I need to communicate that information back to um, fellow councillors so that they are able to disseminate information to the community. So that made that process quite difficult because we're essentially going in blind and, yeah, just had to pre- place an increased level of trust in the state government that the, the multimodal um, was sufficiently robust. Um, and that they had undertaken the requisite investigations to justify the inclusion of Southern Thornlands in the urban footprint. We still today, yeah, have questions about the robustness of both those elements.
Thank you. Probably just a quick statement. I'd expect that trust to go both ways. And trust council and council officers with information so we can make a decision on, for our community.
Just, I might just ask a question on, following on from that. Dean, the reason we asked for the right to information is because if I, if I understand correctly, forecasted by the state in shaping SEQ, but they still um, threw another twenty thousand, nineteen thousand eight hundred, to be precise, uh, people into our urban footprint. So just, that, that's correct. But we, we, the question was not because we just wanted to be recalcitrant. Um, it was because we could not understand with all the planning that's been going on over the last number of years, that we could accommodate the growth forecasted by the state to twenty forty two. I think it's twenty forty two. Um, but they still, all of a sudden, figures and put another twenty thousand. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, just to provide some additional context there. So yes, that's part of the reason why. So council prepared a housing supply statement. And in the housing supply statement, it articulated that it believed it had sufficient um, appropriately zoned land in the city to accommodate um, the population growth forecast outlined in the revised regional plan. We also, um, early on in the process with the state government had communicated to them that the dwelling capacity figure that they had used for this city was incorrect. So, so they had understated our dwelling capacity figure. And it was then our understanding that this capacity figure was used as an input into the multimodal. And I guess um, logic flows that if you put an erroneous figure into a model, you get an erroneous output. So that was part of the reason why we requested further information on how the multi- multimodal worked. So that we had confidence that plugging in uh, all the, yeah, appropriate inputs um, put into the model generated logical um, and I guess defensible outputs. So that is what we're still seeking to this day.
Dean, councillor Boglari, question?
Oh, thank you. Um, Dean, my question is in relation to our city plan amendments on page hundred and five. I mean, we had a resident in here today um, talking about the issues with an MDR on a small lot and the design of it and the impact it will have on the neighbours. Um, because that's the way our city plan is at the moment, but we have a, an amendment in there to try and get better outcomes. But we keep seeing these developments happening because the state isn't okaying and sending it back to us. What is going to be, it's a piece of string, but what do you think will be the outcome with this plan, the housing strategy and us actually finally, if ever, incorporating those changes which we've agreed to happen into our city plan to stop these developments?
Um, thank you for that councillor Boglari. So, yeah, that was a, a, a key question and we actually spoke about that with um, Gold Coast SARA officers yesterday. So they're the ones that assess, um, or they perform the state interest review on our amendments. So we did articulate our concerns flowing on from um, the representations we made to the, the state planner that we have this issue whereby we're lodging amendments and they're getting caught in the, in the logjam and they're not being progressed in a timely manner. Um, to the state's credit, um, as part of their funding announcement that they made recently, they are establishing or they're standing up a new team um, to facilitate, um, I guess, assessment of these alignment amendments when they're lodged with the state government. So funding has been made available to establish uh, an enhanced or, or a larger team to process these amendments. Um, they've also uh, allocated around twelve and a half million dollars, I believe, from memory um, to potentially um, be, uh, I guess, spread amongst councils to undertake further bodies of work that may be required to inform these alignment amendments. So they've established, they've got more resources, they've got funding resources for council. The issue is going to be um, despite the state interest review potentially um, occurring at a quicker pace, will they get caught potentially um, at that higher level and they're not processed by the minister in a timely manner? Now, there is a new planning minister in effect and we have to give her credit and time to respond to these, but that's potentially where um, this becomes problematic if they, you know, they're processed at a low level, but then they're not getting final sign off by the minister so that we can give them effect.
So through the meeting, um, can you remember when we actually sent that in? Was it two years, a year and a half, two, two years ago? Two and a half years ago, was it? We sent it in?
Um.
I've just, I'm sorry, I should have.
Yeah.
Last time when we finally got.
Yeah, you've caught me on the spot there. I'm not, not a hundred percent sure when we submitted those. I think I may, perhaps David has that in an email I sent the other day.
No, I can, I can look it up.
I did actually provide a summary today with, on a list of our amendments, but several of them um, or, or two that I can think of right now have been essentially sitting um, in the state interest review phase, one for nine months and one for seventeen months. One of those is the Minjeraba uh, major amendment, I believe. And that's been sitting there for seventeen months and, yeah, the.
The MDR amendment package.
MDR amendment package.
And there was also the, the other amendment package that had multiple changes in it.
Fifth of October. Okay, so sorry, yeah, just going off David's um, summary here. So fifth of October twenty two twenty two, council submitted the most recent um, information to the state government as part of the information request. And that amendment was placed on hold pending the finalisation of the Redlands housing strategy. So it has been quite some time, but we do anticipate the Redlands housing strategy to be finalised in the first quarter of this year.
Yes.
Yes, um, so council resolved to undertake a major amendment on the fourth of November twenty twenty. And um, we submitted it for the first state interest review on the seventeenth of November twenty twenty. So two years and what, three months and counting. So it has been quite a, a long time and that's why.
Three years.
Sorry, three and a half years. Uh, yeah, and, and that is why our concerns to raise that, you know, the state government's talking about an expedited amendment process, but the practical reality is to date, a lot of them have been sitting there for quite a long period of time.
So my, just following on to that, my concern is now that it's taken so long and in that time, more developments with those inappropriate designs. I'm not against the developments, it's the design of the developments that impacted our residents. They've been happening. Will now though, if they even do it, would we insert that into a city plan when we're about to start a revision? Or is it going to have to wait for a revision now to be fair to officers? Because it's.
Yeah, that, that will be ultimately a decision for the new council to make. Um, yeah, whether it decides to proceed with that amendment or defer it until, yeah, the, I guess, work commences on the um, next version of city plan, whether that's amended or not.
Another two years, we, even though we agreed with something four years ago, I mean, two years ago. Um, was it two? Yeah, no, four years ago, three and a half, three and a half years ago. It could be up to another two years before this. Okay, one thing goes through. Yeah, that's very frustrating. Question councillor Bishop?
Yeah, just acknowledging there's a long history of to-ing and fro-ing between state's perspective and council's perspective and, and not a lot of agreement and a lot of need for clarity around community for consistency. The question is, uh, how important will community consultation be to inform from the bottom up uh, the expectations of changes uh, relating to a lot of these matters in the next chapter of the planning scheme?
I don't think it's relevant to this item, but.
It's relevant to the planning context because all of this relates ultimately to our.
Standing what's required, you actually speaking to the item and asking questions based on that. I don't, I think there's there's multiple levels of community consultation that will occur due to.
Yeah, I just think that, uh, just acknowledging that in this consultation process, there was very minimal, there's been a lot of a minimal approach to consultation. I think it's very important that that gets revisited, is my view.
Well, the state, this is the state's consultation you're talking about, right?
Indeed, and, and in such important matters for our community, a lot of change over a long period of time.
Councillor Talty, do you want to sum up?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. If I could just further on the um, matter raised by uh, the officer. So point three in this motion is to note that the request for an external review of the information that was provided that has been mentioned, that was redacted and so forth. And the officer has said that um, you know, that was in October when they were working on the plan and now the plan is complete. Uh, that, is it, is it better to re-log that or is it better to continue with the original one in the form of the external review to, to the commissioner? Um, because we do still want that information.
Are you suggesting an amendment to the motion?
Uh, I, I'd like a little bit of advice as to whether it's better to continue with the, the request to the commissioner as, as he may release the information now because it's, their, their plan is finished. Or is it better to, if, if indeed they would release more information now, um, also make another information request at this time, some five months later?
By you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for your question councillor Talty. Uh, I've just spoken with David and we think it would be best to, I guess, retain um, the current request for an external review. We can then see what the outcomes of that are. And then if we're, oh, I guess the new council is not sufficiently happy with the response, we could then follow that alternative pathway of, yeah, seeking um, or a lod- a lodging, an RTR request similar to our initial um, RTR request before it was um, I guess amended.
Okay, thank you councillors. I just wanted to interrogate that a little bit further because I do think that the new council, whatever form it takes, will want that information. Uh, so uh, the only thing I would note out of the discussions and I, I think it, it's not unreasonable for the community, looking at this, to think we're in a sort of yes minister or something with um, amendments taking since twenty twenty and still sitting there. And if we go by past history, oftentimes these things sit on ministers' desks until after the next election. And uh, that's quite possible in this instance as well, I'm sure. Um. So it is very frustrating for the community and, and to try to understand what sits where and, and when, when this is a very um, it's difficult when we explain the rules as they normally stand in regard to consultation and planning scheme changes and, and SARA and so forth. To then see this kind of variation through the minister um, for our housing strategy and then subsequent plans. So it is quite difficult and confusing for people to understand all of this and um, there's very little we can do about it. So with that, um, I put the motion. Thank you.
Thank you for offering. Um. Um, I'll, I'll put the motion, those in favour of noting. Thank you. Um, those against, that's carried unanimously. Thank you. Um, councillors, there are no further reports that I've been advised. I have no urgent business. So uh, with that, I will close the meeting at um, ten forty two and thank you for your participation today. For those in the gallery for um, sitting through a very quick meeting. Thank you.